First, good morning, everyone, and thank you for last night. I thought it was very productive. It wasn't too late. People stayed focused, and there were a lot of good questions and a lot of good presentations, too, with the budget. But I'd like to call to order this morning on Friday, May 29th, the 9:00 AM meeting, Quincy City Council Finance Committee. In accordance with Governor Charlie Baker, Baker's March 10, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the Finance Committee of the Quincy City Council is meeting via remote conferencing services that will air on QA TV, Channel 9, Government Access. Madam Clerk, can you call a roll?
Counselor Kane. Counselor Kroll. Counselor Debona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci. Counselor Phelan.
Present.
Counselor, Chairman McCarthy.
Present.
Seven members of a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get started, I'm going to read the open meeting law. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. The matter before us is trying to complete the fiscal 2021 departmental budget hearings. I'd like everybody to try to stay with the 15-minute limitation, and then we'll come back. That way, we can move the meetings along. I thought the time limits have been pretty good. I don't think anybody's got off of that, so I thank you, and we will start off this morning with Mr. Paul Hines with the public buildings budget. Mr. Hines?
Good morning, David. Good morning, Finance Committee members. Thank you for having me. Apologize for having to change your schedule around for my benefit. By and large, as you can see by the budget presentation, the 2021 budget is basically level funded from 2020 with some minor adjustments. It's actually downwards a slight bit owing to the number of pay periods in fiscal 2021. On the year-to-date report for fiscal 2020 that you have, there's some comments I'd like to initially make and then address some other issues. On the energy line, under line 520100, we're at 91% now. Just want to point out it's down a bit because National Grid has lagged in their billing, as we all know they bill a month late. So come July, we'll be paying June bills. So there would appear to be some availability there, when in fact, there's not. And then there's two line items that are in the Department of Public Buildings budget, 50% of the costs and 50% are shared in the line items of the Park Department budget. And then in the Personal Services area, and that's number 510402, the Downtown Coordinator, 512074, the Mechanical Technician. Those two are positions occupied by individuals taking care of their handcuffs out of his common. There's an overage reported on this budget report, the year-to-date, which is explained to me through the Municipal Finance Department, that Munis allotted more of the pay periods for these individuals in public buildings than it ought to have. They should have been transferred over midway through to the Parks Department. So my understanding is there'd be a like reduction on the size of the Park Department for the overages on these lines, but it doesn't affect the bottom line salary, wages earned by these individuals, and it should not affect the bottom line of the city budget. Another line that has overage is towards the bottom of Personnel Services, and this frankly is where they all are. There's no other section of the budget where there's overages. And that's near the bottom at line 512859, and that's the security guard at City and Town Hall. Mid fiscal year, a pay increase was given to that individual owing to the fact that he was then required to carry a gun, his personal gun, on premises to execute the duties of his employment. So he was given an increase in salary for that, and that's what caused that line. HVAC Technician, line 512460, that has about a 15,0640 overage. That is a line that was, we brought in a new or an additional HVAC Technician, someone with experience in the trades in maintaining these more sophisticated HVAC systems in our newer buildings, and has been quite helpful in diagnosing and solving some of the problems in our older buildings. But the increase in this line item is actually offset by a surplus, an apparent surplus, in line 512204. We hired the HVAC tech versus a regular maintenance laborer and broke out that position as an individual line in the 512416. Speaking of the maintenance staff, the line 512204, again, there appears to be, you know, an excess in that line. That's not something I anticipate going forward. That excess is caused by the fact that one of my higher-paid employees has been out for several months on workman's compensation. So we have not, in fiscal year 2020, paid his salary. He's been paid off the worker's comp account with the law department. Is our anticipation that he will be returning in the very near future, right at the start of fiscal 2021? So I do need those funds to pay that position salary. I believe the last one that's out of line with its budget performance is the first one, the very top of the page, under Personal Services. It's line 510110. And that's, it says summer salary and wage permanent. It's an odd name that Munis puts on this. It says wage permanent. That's in fact, our seasonal employees. Back in the day, they would have the summer help who would go out and paint the flag poles and things like that. We've transitioned that. I was kind of partnered with Massachusetts Maritime Academy, and we take in the interns that need to get real-world experience for their degree program in HVAC engineering. It's proven to be very beneficial to those cadets that we bring in, and certainly to Dave and Paul and Brian in our HVAC group. They do get a slightly higher salary or wage than those that are out painting flag poles and light poles and stuff in other departments, because they are towards the end of their college career, and it's a more sophisticated and a more beneficial service we get from them. And that's where that happened. I do anticipate having a similar experience with having those cadets in this year, particularly this year, because some of their internships in the private sector have dried up because of everybody working from home and office buildings not fully opening and such. So that line item and the two lines immediately below it, which are, excuse me, two and three lines below it, are attendant to, those lines are percentages of the overtime and of the summer help lines. The 510110 overage can be absorbed by the funding surplus for this fiscal year. That's in 512204, the maintenance staff. So that leaves with the most significant line, and that is 510130, the departmental That is significantly over. I fully acknowledge that, and it relies, it was caused by a couple of things. We have some people that traditionally not received overtime, which by law should receive overtime for the nature of their employment and their responsibilities. So their overtime is now charged through that line. In addition, through, you know, the support of the mayor and certainly the Finance Committee and the City Council, robust program going on of capital improvements that was funded with the Capital Improvement Plan. And as I've suggested to the council and to the committee before, my in-house construction team, as I call them, is actually my cheapest form of labor on their overtime. And it saves us, you know, quite a bit of administrative burden in doing procurement laws and complying with all of that. Another aspect of that overtime line is, I think you could all anticipate, is the time that's been put in owing to the COVID situation and the shutdowns. Our people were essential employees. We didn't go home. I certainly didn't stay home. And within the later period of time of all this, doing the disinfecting of the other services vans, sharing responsibilities for that with the DPW. Custodians and such have been doing the cleanings, the disinfecting, the heightened cleanings and heightened disinfecting of the public buildings. We've had people in building physical barriers between workstations and public and private areas, public and staff areas, and just trying to help get the city back on track by opening up the buildings and making them safe for those that work in it, those that certainly have to visit, don't have the option to telephone or internet services. So that's about what I have to offer as an introduction, as an explanation, and certainly we hear and willing and entertain questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Questions for Mr. Hines. Chair recognizes President Liang.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Paul. It's good to see you.
Good morning. Thank you.
How are you feeling?
I'm doing well. I actually, I haven't taken my pain meds so that I wouldn't be more irreverent than I sometimes tend to be. So I'll be popping a couple after this, but I'm doing okay.
Good, good. Well, I have just two questions for you. So the first is with respect to the salary for the interns and for the summer help. And so I know this summer, obviously, for fiscal year 21, things are pretty much up in the air, depending on when, you know, folks will feel comfortable sort of coming back out. But do you feel, even like, even under those circumstances, I think this is an incredible program. I think it's a really great asset for the kids in the city. Do you think that $25,000 is enough to cover what activity you think you'll get this summer?
I think it is. You know, everything's level funded. They are more expensive. Two of them have advanced in years in their program. We have begun the conversations about engaging them. They have been made a salary offer. I'm going to suggest they would be level funded over last year, and I kind of have the upper hand on it, because they are somewhat desperate. You don't want to take advantage of them, but they do do good work. They're very helpful. Older of the ones that did it last year wrote a credible report back to the school, as they need to do, about the experience they received. You know, I think I could do it with the $25,000, and if it works that I don't, I think I can reallocate within this 251 section if the time comes.
Great. Keep us posted on that. I'd love to hear more about the program and how it grows in the coming years. The second and last question that I have for you is line item, I'm going to give you the number, because the names that are listed in the budget book and the names that are listed on the actuals to date are different, but it's the line item 512338. So in the actuals, I have it as Labor Gardener, but then in the budget book, I have it as, oh, no, wait, Labor Gardener, but then it's the year-to-date's.
Yep.
The historical actuals. I'm sorry, it was listed as Handyman, but in here, it's listed as Labor Gardener.
Yeah, they changed it up.
I don't see anything being spent in that line for the last fiscal years from '17 upwards.
Right. That's a position that, for some reason, it's here, and honestly, I'd have to ask Eric to step in on this one. My understanding is it's involved with the downtown crew and not my department, and that's why the overage in the Mechanical Technician line for fiscal 2020 is going to be absorbed by that line 512338. It's associated with that downtown operation, so I don't really have the particulars on it. I would ask, you know, again, that Eric step up on that one.
Okay, thanks.
Through you, Chairman, I'd be more than happy to discuss that. First off, good morning, councilors. That feels really weird to say. So this is the other half of that cut that was made to public buildings, sorry, to parks last night. It is a little weird, because it's the same object code, but has a different account description. So in Mr. Hines's budget this year, that Handyman with that salary that should have been charged to that line got charged to that Mechanical Technician line. That's why it was overbudgeted, why it got increased year over year despite it being the same number of people. So that $34,000, similar to the $34,000 that was cut out of the same object code in parks last night, can be cut out of this budget this year.
Okay. So, but I just want to make sure, though, that the work being done, similar to last night, is being covered under the overage for the Mechanical Technician, right? And then just moving forward, just for these things, you know what I mean? Like, if we can, and I think Counselor Mahoney had mentioned it last night, if we could just be a little bit more mindful about how it's being printed and how it's being showed to us, just because these are things that I know all my colleagues go through with the fine tooth comb, and I certainly don't want it to come across like it's a mistake on anyone's part. And so, you know, things happen. I totally understand. Like, I do plain and typos in my day, but just moving forward, I think it'd be helpful for everyone to better understand the book if those line items could be done better. So with that, Eric, thank you so much, and.
If I may, following on your first question of the summer help and the Massachusetts Maritime interns, this would be a source, this line, if it remained, that could supplement that line in that program if need be.
Okay. I mean, I don't doubt that that's the case. I think, you know, to answer your earlier question, it sounds like there's another area where you can pull that from. And I think, you know, given how high the overage is, I would feel more comfortable cutting it, especially if, you know, given the conversations that were had, if it's an overage that shouldn't have been there in the first place. But I appreciate that, Paul. Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, with that, I'd like to make a motion to cut $34,000 from line item
Okay, there's a motion out. Just on the motion myself, I received Eric's memo, but I got it late, and we were already kind of in the works here last night. So my apologies. I know Jen sent it out this morning. I hope a lot of folks got it, got a chance to look at it, but it was pretty self-explanatory when you looked at the memo.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I didn't get a chance to see it.
Yeah, we shot it out, but it's pretty clear. And on that, on the motion, does anybody have any comments? So we're going to cut $34,000. The line, I'm looking at 512338.
Correct.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Also, could I get a motion to adjust that line from someone so we could make the adjustment in the department right now?
Motion to accept as amended?
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Kane. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much. I'd say enjoy your afternoon, but enjoy your weekend anyways. Looks like it'd be nicer. Thank you all.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you for your support through the year as well.
Did you recover?
Did anyone have any other questions for Mr. Hines?
No.
All set. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hines. Okay, that was, next up is Mr. Mulvey in the education budget.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Good morning. Good morning, councilors, and I want to thank you for inviting myself and Superintendent Mr. Malaney to present the budget to you for FY 2021. Before I begin, I do want to thank, obviously, the mayor and the school committee for giving us a fantastic budget this year. I do want to point out first off that even though we are in the middle of a COVID-19 epidemic and the ensuing crisis, we this year through in the FY 21 budget do not have any layoffs, which is fantastic. In fact, we are building, as you'll see through the budget presentation that we present to you today. But again, that's a big thank you to the mayor and to the school committee for their support. And of course, I do want to thank you, the City Council, for your support year in and year out with regard to the school budget. Without your support, obviously, what we do here in the Quincy Public Schools could not be done. So a great thanks is owed to you. And lastly, well, one more, I do want to thank the SLT, particularly Jim Malaney, for assisting in putting this budget together. Again, everything is very detailed, and as usual, Mr. Malaney did an excellent job with regard to putting the numbers together. And lastly, I want to thank the superintendent. This will be his last budget presentation before the City Council in regard to the Quincy Public Schools. And, you know, as always, he is a, you know, a great leader for the Quincy Public Schools, and I just want to thank him and everything that he's done for the school department. And I know that you'll be in agreement with me in that thanks. So with that, we'll move forward with the budget presentation. As you'll see, Jim, Mr. Malaney and I will go back and forth into the screen. We thought this was the easiest way to do it. Also, we'll be maintaining safe distances for COVID-19 purposes, but you'll be seeing myself and Mr. Malaney going back and forth in front of the screen so that we can give you an efficient presentation. So I'll ask Mr. Malaney to enter the screen now. Thank you.
Good morning, councilors. Thank you again for all your support. I'll just get right into it. The budget you have before you for the year is $117,385,590. It's a $1.97 million increase over our previous budget, and the funding this year comes from three main sources. The mayor's appropriation of $111,185,590, a million-dollar increase from the three-year 20 budget, which includes the money that comes from the state. Projected circuit breaker funding, this is a reinforcement for special education tuitions and other expenses of $5.2 million. And the CARES Elementary Secondary and Elementary School Relief Fund, we were awarded $2,030,000. We're using $1 million for continuing our operations to prevent any layoffs, and we're saving $1 million to roll forward into the next year. As usual, we started our breakdown to look at, see what we'd need to maintain a level budget, so we added in our negotiated increases, subtracted out the items I'd mentioned before, the circuit breaker and the CARES. And once again, the mayor has been gracious enough to let us use our breakage. We're estimating 12 retirements worth about $40,000 a year in savings, so that's $48, $480,000. We came up with a budget figure of $110 million to maintain level services. The appropriation is $111,185,590. So this leaves us $780,000 to build our budget on. And as again I said, meets all our contractual obligations to step in level raises, provides additional funding to meet class size, academic programs, academic support, academic expenses and non-academic expenses. I'm just going to turn to Mulvey regarding our process.
Thank you, Mr. Malaney. And I'll just quickly go through how the budget process is done here in the Quincy Public Schools, and I'll just go through it very quickly. First, we identify areas of consideration. We review organized options to address possible areas of impact. That's usually done with the superintendent, superintendent's leadership team, as it was done this year. We prioritize possible areas of increase, shift and reduction. We determine the impact on budget area and lines throughout the entire budget, and this is done through feedback, again, through the SLT. We present options to the Quincy School Committee, which we did last Wednesday. We prioritize options pursuant to the wishes of the Quincy School Committee. We rework those options if necessary and then act on those options. We also, as we're doing today, present to the Quincy City Council PR review as well. And next, you'll see, just at a glance, a chart which shows our budget priorities. And you notice at the center of the budget priorities are our students, and then we work our way out from there. So we always want to make sure, whatever we do, we're doing it for the best interests of our students. And you'll see, it goes out to, from there, it goes out to academic classroom teachers, academic programs, academic support, non-academic support, subsidized programs, academic expenses and non-academic expenses. And we'll go through each one of these for you, and Mr. Malaney will be back to go through the numbers on each of these priorities.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, President.
I just wanted to really quickly share that I can share the presentation on the screen if it's all right with you guys, and that way, we're not just, you know, folks who are paying attention or watching from home, don't just have to look at the screen. If you guys are okay with it, I can share the presentation that we have printed out for us. That's all.
Sure.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor. I believe the next slide would be great. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This is our academic classroom teachers. We're looking at increasing 2.5 positions. One academic classroom teacher to support EL students, English Language Learners students at the high school, and 1.5 academic classroom teachers to address class size needs. We're estimating that to be about $82,500. So in total, we're increasing academic classroom teachers $137,500. Go to the next slide. We're looking at our academic programs. We've addressed a lot of areas here. We're increasing another ELL teacher at the high school level, having two literacy teachers for early intervention in math and literacy, increasing two special education teachers for language development classes in elementary and middle schools, an increase of one special education teacher for Orton Gillingham, an increase of one special education teacher for the CARES classes, and a increase of one speech therapist. So in total, that's eight positions for $440,000. Moving on, we go to our academic support. We're increasing guidance staff for social emotional programs by one position. We're increasing our IT support by one position, and half of this is going to be funded through the mayor's CARES money for COVID Relief Act for the half of the year, and we'll be picking up for the second half. So this is a tech manager. As you know, our budget doesn't show everything that we have for expenses, including health insurance and what have you, but even beyond that, the mayor is purchasing through the CARES fund 7,000 phone books for our students, as well as 1,000 laptops for our teachers. This tech person will be able to repair and maintain and keep those updated. So that's in there for half a year's salary, but it's a full position. We're also increasing central office administration by one position. That's for needs. We've been looking at this for several years. This should help out with edival and professional development. So that's a total of three positions for $210,000. Moving on, we're not looking at any changes in non-academic support. We're not looking for any changes in academic expenses. And in the final slide, for non-academic expenses, we're reducing gasoline to shift funding to professional expenses by $7,479. So if you look on Slide 13, we have a summary of all what I just went over with the new money. We're looking at 13.5 positions for a total of $780,021, that amount I mentioned before. And then the total breakdown to the right of that, it has the contractual raises to step in level for professional staff, which represents the increase of $1,976,021, of which $1 million is coming from the CARES fund, and the remainder of the $976,021 is that increase in our budget that the mayor has proposed. Thank you.
And lastly, you'll see the final slide is again, the priorities at a glance, and it just basically breaks down for you percentage-wise in regard to the new money, where it's going. So as you can see, under academic classroom teachers, 17.63%. Under academic programs, it's 56.21%. Under academic support, it's 26.92%. Under non-academic support, there are no change. Subsidized programs, no change. Academic expenses, no change. Under non-academic expenses, you'll see a negative 0.96%, and that's reflective of the move of the approximate $7,000 in gas funding into staffing. So at a glance, essentially, that is how our new money is being spent, and that is essentially our budget proposal as presented. And if you have any questions, we'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mulvey and Mr. Malaney. As usual, you know, the.
You know, the school department, and I know a lot of us here are familiar with it, is very organized and always got the right priorities at the forefront. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Malaney or Chair recognizes Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, everyone. I just want to start off by saying, Dr. DiCristofaro, thank you for your entire career over being superintendent, working with me while I was on the school committee. I enjoyed the Sunday afternoons at Cottington Hall, and I am looking forward to the new interim Kevin Malvi doing a great job as well as being over there. You know, I just, looking back at this particular year, and you guys have done a great job with the different programs on Zoom and the classroom participation, some of the biggest things I was kind of looking forward to is how do we teach for the future? Looking more of the budget for '21, and it's been great because the mayor and the administration, and we've built a lot of new schools over the last nine years. We've had three new schools that have built more space and square footage, but looking forward to trying to get back to school in September, would it be a problem with classroom sizes? For instance, if we had 20 in a classroom and they started imposing these social distancing type of guidelines, do we have enough space in our schools to maintain that type of space? I guess I could say square footage. And do we have a type of, I guess, a plan to maybe try to mitigate that when the time comes? It's been a question that's been asked about, and it has a lot to do with our budget. Do we have enough room size in the classrooms? Do we use a lot of the cafeteria space, gym space? Do we look forward to getting St. Mary's up and running a little faster than we thought? Is the new acquisition for our special education on Old Colony going to help, and do we have to speed up that process? So I know it's a lot I asked you, but it's something to think about with our budget and how we're going to budget out things. So, Mr. Malvi, if you could, or anyone else?
Sure, and the superintendent may want to weigh in on this as well, but all of those factors are going to be considered. It's our intention, obviously, to work with the school committee and work with guidance from DZ with regard to what they call Phase Four reentry. Our hope is that we will be able to do that, but nevertheless, we are going to, we will have a plan in place in case reentry is not possible. And we will see whether or not there'll be, you know, it's a combination of reentry and remote learning. So, you know, all of these factors are going to be considered with regard to how we proceed moving forward in September. But even prior to September, we are in the process currently, right now, of putting together a very rigorous remote learning summer program, both for our regular education students and our special education students. I think at current check, we have over 700 regular elementary children signed up, students signed up for our rigorous summer program, and I believe we're closing in on 100 special education students. So we're going to, we're working on this from the get-go. We haven't stopped developing plans from the beginning of this crisis. So the first step is getting this summer program in place so that we can make up any losses that may have been incurred for students during the regular year, making them up over the summer. And then we will most likely put together a task force or a team with all the stakeholders, including parent groups, to take a look at over the summer what our options are with regard to returning in September. And of course, we'll be looking to the state, to DZ, and to the governor's office to give us the parameters within which we can work. Are we going to be working totally remotely? Are we going to be returning? Are we going to be doing hybrid of one or the other? All of those will be considerations, and of course, the school committee will have a significant voice, obviously, along with all the stakeholders, parent groups in that process. So right now, we don't have a definitive answer for you as to what September's going to look like, but I can tell you, we will have a plan, and it will be effective. And our goal, as I said in the budget presentation, is making, keeping our focus on our priority, which is our students and our families, and making sure whatever decisions we make, they're at the center of our decisions, and that whatever program we need to put together, which we will have ready, will benefit them to the most extent possible.
Thank you, Mr. Malvi. I'm happy to see that you got some special education teachers, Orton Gillingham, also special education in the CARES class and speech therapist teachers. So thanking you for, you know, putting in these new teachers, specialists to put in our schools to help out our children. Just overall, you guys are doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Real quick, the last five years, we had an increase in contractually, a 1%, 2%, 2%, 2%, 3%. Where are we now, or is there new deliberations on a contract, or what's going on?
So on that issue, we have 10 unions on the school side that we negotiate with. We are, prior to the COVID-19 crisis occurring, we were in the process of gearing up to begin those negotiations. As of right now, for our non-professional staff, almost all of our contracts end on June 30th. For our professional staff, the contract ends on August 31st. It's our intention to move forward with those negotiations as quickly as possible. Obviously, we have to work within the parameters of the COVID-19 regulations, but I am in constant communication with all of our unions and union presidents, and we're hoping that we can get that back online as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all your time and all your hard work. We're looking forward to the future, and I know you guys got your pulse on it, so thank you so much for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Mahoney.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Malvi, and congratulations on your interim position. And I just wanted to also congratulate Dr. DiCristofaro, it was your last budget meeting, but you're going to probably be moving right on to another bigger challenge. And I'm just curious to know if Kevin's going to change that chart, because, you know, you probably, you know, that chart's been around for a while, so it's a good one, though. I do have some concerns, obviously, just going forward, Kevin. This is going to be a challenging time, obviously. We're here taking over with COVID-19. I know Counselor DeBona mentioned a few things, but also like buses and transportation. Those types of things are very concerning to me, because I do believe sometimes when we use the buses, they're using multiple schools, and it's just, there's a lot of intricacy that goes on to how you're going to be able to manage bringing back our students into the buildings. And, you know, your budget covers the most important thing, which is the teachers and the education, but my concern is how we're going to be able to manage that Phase Four. It's not included in your budget, some of the phasing and some of the additional things, with the exception of maybe some of the Chromebooks. Is that true?
What we've actually received, so with regard to our buses, our focus, obviously, on our buses, you know, obviously making sure that we transport our students as safely as possible. We'll be looking at CDC guidelines on that, as well as Department of Public Health guidelines with regard to the distance that we have to maintain for students on the buses, and we'll certainly make efforts to do that. The other focus with regard to transportation would be the sanitization and cleaning of the buses every time it's used, to make sure that, you know, every time there is a trip, there is a sanitation process done. Fortunately, the mayor has, through the CARES Act, allowed us to purchase a significant amount of PPE, personal protective equipment. That also includes sanitization equipment, including ECHO sprayers, which are used to actually spray relatively quickly the buses down so that it immediately disinfects the area. We've also been able to purchase a significant amount of gloves and masks and even goggles for some of us staff that would have to, you know, have use of that equipment. Again, the mayor has been very generous with regard to our need in preparing for a potential Phase Four reentry, and we are in good shape with regard to, through the CARES Act and funding through the CARES Act, with regard to purchasing all of this PPE equipment, as well as all of the sanitization equipment that we would need in order to make sure that our students are transported safely, as well as making sure that our staff is safe as well.
Yeah. And the other question that I had is, obviously, we don't know, I mean, our plans are that we're going to be back in classrooms in September, and, you know, there's all mixed messaging as to, you know, what could happen in the fall. And I know that this kind of was, none of us were, as prepared as you can be, none of us were really prepared for the drastic changes that we all had gone through. And the online training that got up and running took a couple of weeks to do it, but it did. It's a lot of, I find, all the reading I'm doing, it's a big challenge for students because they've never done the online before. Are you seeing issues with that, or any way that you're going to be able to? Because you were doing pass fail, and you're probably going to have to move into grades. We can't do pass fail forever. So I'm just curious to know how you're going to be able to handle that. And I know this is my last question, it's just because it's a concern for a lot of people, it goes along with the budget, too.
No, it's a great question, and, you know, since this crisis occurred on May 14th, we've been ramping up our efforts to increase the rigor for our students. So the next step, as I had mentioned to Mr. DeBona, is that we're having a very rigorous summer program. Now we have over 700 general education kids. We're closing in on 100 special education students. So this is going to be a real test for us with regard to how, and we have a significant amount of eye-in by the teachers' union and the teachers who have already agreed to participate in large numbers in this summer program. So this summer program will be, really be a test for us with regard to increasing the rigor, increasing the amount of time, virtual time, one-on-one time between teachers and their students. And Erin Perkins and Matty Roy and other members of the SLT have been doing a fantastic job with regard to developing this program. The program itself will be reviewed next Wednesday at school committee. We're tightening up all the details, but we are going to certainly increase the rigor for our students. And again, if in fact, the state says that we can't come back and we have to continue remote learning, this will be an excellent way for us to hone our skills in that area, and then hopefully move as smoothly as possible into remote learning if we have to in September. Obviously, everyone wants to get back. I certainly want to get back. I think everyone wants to get back, and we're hoping to do that. And we will be prepared if there are a return, particularly dealing with issues where we may have some staff members who are in the high-risk category. We'll make preparations in order to find appropriate coverage for those staff members, so that if they can't return, we will have highly qualified staff to continue the education of our students in their place. So there's a number of different factors that we're considering, and again, our work over the summer and dealing with all the stakeholders involved will help us develop those plans as we move forward and as we get guidance from the state, again, with regard to the parameters in which we'll be working.
I appreciate the update. I do just want to stress that it's very challenging for many, you know, whether it's private businesses or small businesses, but really for the educational world, it's a very challenging, especially public education, because you really have to give everybody a fair opportunity. The last question I had, I know that you said that the mayor funded 700 Chromebooks and 1,000 computers for teachers. Is that what was said?
It's actually 7,000 Chromebooks, believe it or not, and 1,000 laptops, so a total of 8,000 pieces of equipment that will be used in the event. Again, if we have to continue remote learning, those pieces of equipment will actually hopefully be in so that we can use them if necessary for our summer program. So far, we've already handed out to students in excess of 1,300 Chromebooks, and we'll be handing out more as the seniors sign out. They'll be turning in their Chromebooks. Those Chromebooks will be wiped clean, sanitized, and be prepared to be distributed to other students over the summer and for next year. So we're, thanks to the mayor and the CARES money, we will be in very good shape with regard to maintaining and expanding, if necessary, our remote learning.
So that 7,000, that will be enough for your, for all students to be able to have a Chromebook next year, potentially, correct?
We believe it will be, yes. And because we have approximately somewhere between 1,300 Chromebooks, 1,300 and 1,400, perhaps as many as 1,500 Chromebooks at the moment. So that in combination with the 7,000, we'll be getting sometime in, I think, early July, we should be good.
The last question that I had, and this will wrap it up. The other thing that can be very challenging for online learners is how their teachers are communicating. So the assumption is that all teachers have a computer at home, too, but will the teachers be supplied a computer? You said 1,000 for teachers, but will the teachers, because if they're not on the same technology, sometimes it's harder to translate that.
Correct.
I do have, I have a little bit of knowledge, because I have a teacher in my house that's teaching online as well, so it's just kind of an interesting, it's an interesting, even for myself to listen to the classroom go on. It's, he's teaching illustrations, so I don't know how he's doing that. But I'm just asking that question, because it's important that, you know, that the teachers are also equipped if they're having to do remote learning.
Absolutely, and that's a good point. That's why we have the 1,000 laptops, where it's our anticipation that any staff member that needs a laptop or wishes to have a school laptop because of this 1,000 coming online will have access to that. So we have approximately 850 teachers in the district at the moment, so we feel that 1,000 laptops that are coming in will certainly cover our teachers' needs, and we'll have a reserve in case a paraprofessional may need it, or a speech therapist may need it, or a behavioral analyst may need it, or, and also to cover any breakdown in computers, one can be handed in while the tech fixes that computer and another can be handed out. So there is no gap in technology, and that was the idea of getting 1,000 for the staff in laptops.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for the information, and again, congratulations to both of you. And I look forward to working with both of you in different capacities now, so thanks.
Thank you very much.
Chair recognizes Counselor Kroll and then Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Dr. D., again, thank you, thank you for everything. Thank you for your advocacy on behalf of Quincy Public Schools, you know, for a very long time. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and I know you'll do a good job where you're going, and decided to work with you, Mr. Malvi, in your interim post. Some stuff was covered here this morning that I had some curiosity around, particularly logistics, so I want to thank Counselor.
Did we lose him?
Yeah, I think he's frozen.
Can't hear him.
Come on back, Counselor Kroll.
Try to suggest you move on.
Yeah. I'll go to Counselor Palmucci and come back to Counselor Kroll.
Unfortunately, my microphone is working fine today.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, want to add to the chorus of congratulations and well wishes to Dr. DiCristofaro. Done an incredible job. Thank you for your service to the city of Quincy. I don't think every department head loves their department, but man, you live it, breathe it, bleed it. It's so clear from all of your actions that I've experienced over the last 10 years, so can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
You know, bring on the Malvi era. I trust it'll be just as successful, and, you know, hopefully, fingers crossed, it'll be a nice, long tenure in the position. But I just wanted to ask, Mr. Malvi, about the free lunch and breakfast programs? I talked to Dr. DiCristofaro pretty early on about this to get a sense, and I haven't checked in with him, but what, where do we stand with how those are going in terms of participation? And I know that, again, pretty early on, you guys had expanded the locations from which you were dispensing or dispersing food for students. And the reason I ask, I think, is obvious, the times of crisis... And the reason I ask, I think, is obvious, the times of crisis, the folks who live in poverty or the working poor are often hit the hardest, and I think this crisis is no different. We've seen statistics of the people who are getting sick and the people who are having the hardest time economically.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that, and I trust that you guys are, I just want to check in on it as to what we're doing to make sure that kids don't fall even further behind on such important issues like, you know, health and nutrition.
Sure. So with regard to the food service program, we got that up and running almost immediately. And I do have to thank our food service director, Sarah Doofour, and her team because she does a fantastic job with regard to coordinating all of this. I think to date, or at least as of Wednesday, we have served 65,000 lunches and 65,000 breakfasts to all of our students. And as of today, it's more because it's continuing. Initially, and we've been expanding the program since it opened, but now we are serving regularly a large amount of people, that's 65,000 breakfasts and lunches. Will just kind of give you an idea of how many families in Quincy are in need of this program. And that's our intention to continue this, as well as continue this through the summertime so that our most vulnerable families are served and that they get the food that they need moving forward. So we have every intention of making sure that the program continues. I do want to thank also the Food Service Union, who I've worked hand-in-hand with along with Sarah Doofour and the superintendent. They have been just fantastic. Because as you know, under the COVID-19 regulations, you know, they're not necessarily obligated to, you know, come to work. They could have, you know, used any number of COVID, FMLA-related reasons to stay home, but they didn't. They knew that our students needed this food and their families. And heroically, they came in and worked every day. Obviously, we made sure they had all of their proper PPE, but nevertheless, they worked heroically to make sure day in and day out, our kids would serve their food. Even on holidays like Memorial Day and Patriots' Day, they came in when they were supposed to have a day off. They, they came in and they served our students. And because of that, we, you know, we've made sure that, you know, to the best of our ability, no one has fallen through the cracks and students that need food are getting the food that they need.
That's terrific. I'm really glad to hear that. Do you, do you have any sense of whether or not people are falling through the cracks in terms of how many, how many meals we're giving out prior to COVID and then subsequent to COVID? I mean, are there kids who aren't making it to the school to get the meals in any large numbers or is it difficult to track?
No, so fortunately through our guidance staff, and again, there's just so many people involved in the caring for our families. So our guidance staff, our health and wellness staff, they're in constant communication with our families and our students. So if, in fact, so that we have multiple layers here to make sure that no student, no family is falling through the cracks if they need assistance, not just food assistance, but other assistance as well, health and wellness assistance just in general. But we are in constant communication with our families. If, for instance, a family, for whatever reason, can't make it to get food, we'll bring food to them. And we have resources to make that happen. So, you know, obviously, it's a, it's a constant work in progress. And as of right now, we, I believe we're serving our students and families to the best of our ability. And we've put in place multiple levels of student contact and engagement so that students don't fall through the cracks and families don't fall through the cracks.
That's, that's outstanding. Thank you. I, you know, I get to say, and, you know, I've had a lot of these budget hearings and it's always the school department budget presentation when I ask a question and I get a response that is far better than any response I, you know, would have thought of myself. I mean, that's terrific that you're doing that much.
Thank you.
You guys are a top-notch organization. The city's lucky to have you guys in, in leadership over there and keep up the good work, keep taking care of our kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. I'm going to try to go back to Councilor Kroll if he's, he's with us, he's back.
We're going to do a take two. So the question is, with students coming in as potential kindergarteners for this year, obviously, as a parent, that's a pretty, you know, it's a pretty heavy conversation that me and my wife are having. And, you know, it's a big move for our family. What does that process look like?
So that process, as with all of our grades, we're going, we'll be working with all the stakeholders. That includes obviously families over the summertime to develop a plan for that. We'll be looking for guidance from the state, as I said earlier, not only the governor's office, but also the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Because they'll set the basis upon which, you know, we will decide what our plan is. Are they going to allow us to return to school? And if so, then we'll make a plan based on full reentry. Are they going to tell us that we need to continue remote learning? If that's the case, we'll have a plan for that and we'll develop a more rigorous plan for that in September, as I said, through the, through the development of the summer program. So we, right now, will be ready for whatever the directors are from the state and we will make sure that whatever, whatever the decision is and whatever plan we're going to move forward with, that our students will be at the center of that decision and we'll do the best we can under the circumstances to make sure that our students are educated to the best of our ability.
Right, totally understand that. It's more a question about new student integration versus, you know, current students coming back. I mean, my understanding was, and I'm not as familiar with the process, so I'm partially being educated here as well, that it was kind of a multiple-step checkpoint where a student would, for lack of a better word, be evaluated based on whatever the criteria was. And then, you know, they would, based on parental discretion, move forward to, you know, go to kindergarten or, I don't know what the alternative would be. I guess that's what I'm trying to figure out a little.
Yeah, we'll be working on those plans. And I know Erin Perkins, our director of, one of our curriculum directors, and Matty Roy and all of the SLT will be working on those plans with regard to reaching out to parents to get their students evaluated and get them prepared for whatever the state tells us we need to be prepared for, with, again, whether that's continued remote learning or reentry. That plan will be developed with all stakeholders moving forward and certainly, parents in the community, we will be well aware and, you know, in advance of whatever that, that decision is. And when I say in advance, I mean, as soon as possible.
Advance, yeah. I mean, it's technically, what, 90 days away?
Correct.
Right?
So whatever the plan is, as I said, the students are going to be, and families are going to be our focus and we will make sure that communication is at its highest level, particularly during this time. We can't communicate enough with our parents at this time during a crisis. And as the superintendent says, communicate, 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 particularly during a crisis. We do that anyway, but we will make sure that everyone knows what the plan is moving forward as soon as possible.
Right. It's just, it's an interesting place to be, right? Because you, my child has been, you know, at a certain spot for however many years. And now this is, you know, this is a big change. And it's, my wife and I were kind of talking about it the other night. It's like, you're going to go to a new environment, albeit virtually, right? That very well could be the case, where you're starting to kind of learn a new system and learn new people, but it's all, it's all virtual. I mean, I know you had covered it a little bit in your comments. I just want to go on the record in saying like, thank you, teachers, because, you know, we have outside of like my children, been also kind of like doing some home learning and it's, yeah, everyone just trying to make it work. But as I contemplate sort of the path forward for my son, the environment is just, it's just different, I guess, right?
You're absolutely right about thanking the teachers. I mean, without them, none of this would work. I have to say, our relationship with the teachers and the teachers' union, the Quincy Education Association, President Allison Cox, has never been better. They've been excellent during this process with regard to working with us and making sure, again, as I said, that the students are at the center of all of our decision-making. And I have to say, the teachers and the teachers' union have been excellent during this whole process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Kroll. Chair recognizes Councilor Phelan.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to comment before I ask my questions. Dr. DiChristofaro, thank you for your service. I've worked with you both as a city councilor and as a department head to a building of some, some, some great schools that have come online in the last couple of years. So I appreciate you, your team, and what you've done for the city. Should be very proud. You've left a very nice legacy to the city. And I'm really looking forward to working with you on Quincy College when those issues come up. And just thank you for your service. As a, as a father who had two kids go through the Quincy Public Schools, it was an excellent experience and I'm very proud of our school system and what they've accomplished in some very difficult times. So thank you for your leadership, Dr. D. A question I had, and I mean, we've all talked about a lot of things with academics and all this. I also realize that sometimes with school, that sometimes there are other issues with not just academics. What do you see for the, for the future of like the fall sports? And I know a couple of, as I walk around to get out of the house, I'm socially distancing it with a mask on. I've had people ask me, what do you think like the Thanksgiving game and stuff like that, which, which is also a very big part of high school. And obviously, we have to take, take into effect safety for us. But do you foresee anything with that or any of those fall sports going on?
No, absolutely. So obviously athletics, it's a hugely important part of what we do here in the Quincy Public Schools. Athletics, as, as, as everyone knows, is a huge draw for students. And it just gives them, you know, the overall culture with regard to their school. It encourages them to come to school, encourages them to do well because they have the, you know, the ability to participate in a sport that they love. So athletics is absolutely key to our educational programming here in Quincy. And with that, we have been moving forward with preparing for fall sports. So just last week, we had interviews regarding girls' soccer at Quincy High School and girls' soccer at North Quincy High School, for instance. So we're not delaying preparations for fall sports. In fact, we are absolutely moving forward. We're continuing with our posts. If we need a new position filled because of a vacancy, we're filling it and we're preparing for fall sports. We're ordering uniforms. We're ordering all the supplies necessary for it. Our hope, again, is that the governor's office and DZ will allow us to return full-time and we'll follow whatever restrictions we have to follow with regard to distancing and masks and PPE and hand sanitizer and all of that. That's why we're ordering so much now and preparing for the fall. But I believe that athletics to students is so important that that will not be ignored and we're moving forward right now with the idea of returning full-time if possible. And if they, if the state tells us that we have to do something less than that while still maintaining our athletic programming, we're certainly going to do that too. So I just, it's just too important not to move forward with.
I think I lost the last part of it. You broke up.
In summary, we're moving forward with our athletic program for the fall.
That's basically, I think it is important because it's obviously part of the high school experience, having had both children play very active in sports and that, that whole combination of academic and also being prepared physically and working as a team. So a lot of people identify. I mean, could we have a Thanksgiving game where everyone's watching it on QTV? I think that could be a possibility, but I think it's great that you move forward. And again, a great job to the schools, to the teachers who have continued to do the learning and I'm very impressed with the work that was done. And I've heard from a lot of people who are too. So kudos to you and your team now, Kevin, and congratulations to Dr. DiChristofaro on his great legacy and his moving on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Before I entertain a motion, I'd like to say a couple of words. First of all, we're in very good hands with Mr. Malvi and company. Had the pleasure of being on the school committee with Mr. Malvi and worked closely with him for, for a decade or so. And I feel very confident in Kevin and the, and the team that's there. Just going to make sure that that Dr. DiChristofaro doesn't try to take anybody with him. But, an honor, just an honor and a privilege to work with Rick. He came in a couple of years ahead of me as superintendent. He had, you know, 30-plus in the system. Just an honor and a privilege, prepared all the time, 24/7 access. Councilor DeBonner mentioned Sundays. It didn't matter if it was Sunday night or Saturday, you get a hold of them, they'll get right back to you. We were, we were spoiled and will be spoiled again probably with Mr. Malvi and company because they care that much about Quincy. I think Councilor Palmucci's questions always circle back to that answer, that we're in a very special community where the school system and all the departments seem to rise to the occasion when we have a dilemma. And, and it all feeds back to the administration, I think, in allowing them to come off the leash and, and get things done. So been a privilege, Dr. D. I've enjoyed it. We've had a lot of fun, got a lot of work done. And I look forward also to you over at the college and, and to help you as much as possible. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor.
With that, could I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Malvi.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, team.
Councilors, take care.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Next up is Chief Keenan and the police budget.
Good morning, Councilors, and thank you for allowing me to present this unique format. It's, we all know it's challenging times and going forward, hopefully this isn't the new normal, but I look forward to seeing you all in person. This year's budget, thank you again for your support and support from the mayor as well. This year is a fairly lean budget. As you know, we did hire a number of new offices, 22 in total or 21 in total. And those new offices will be going to training starting next week. There'll be a number of them going to the MBTA Transit Academy. And then we have, the rest of them will be going to the Plymouth Academy. The unfortunate, the timing of the hiring and the unfortunate thing was that these offices, they, all the training had been postponed. They put a lot of the training that was ongoing on hold and they delayed a couple of the academies. But we did do some training up at Quincy High School and the doctor is still on. Thank him for that and thank him for all the years of service that he had with the city of Quincy and the great working relationship that we have as partners for the children. It's all for the children. But the budget this year is fairly flat. There's total increase in the budget, the police budget this year is 100, is 1.68%, which is about $519,000 in total. Some of the new funding for the new offices that we're going to hire is going to come out of COVID-19 funding. The city received some money for funding for COVID-19. So I believe we're able to use some of that funding to increase the ranks of the Quincy Police Department. Most of the line items are either contractual, small contractual raises or some raises in training time went up a little bit. And that's because we have to train all of our offices in 40 hours each year, mandatory training, and also some of the in-service training that we have to do to keep some of our specialists up to snuff in training. So I'd be glad to take any questions if you have any.
Chair recognizes Councilor Liang.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good morning, Chief. How are you?
Good morning, Councilor. How are you?
I'm good. I am, I always say this with your department because I never have any issues with needing to cut anything, but then I look at what was spent and I feel like you've always come in so, you know, conservative and tight in your numbers. And I always worry that you don't ask for enough because we want to give you everything that you need. But specifically too, and just going through these items for the uniform allowance, you went down significantly and that is, and we're bringing on some new hires. So could you just clarify why that need isn't there?
That's because contractually, the That's because contractually the unions agreed to forego their uniform allowance in the last, the last contractual agreement with the superiors and the patrol officers. That differential was eliminated.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. That was it. I was just curious as, um, you know, again, we can't add to the budget. If I could, I would probably push back on you a little bit in your department. I really always do appreciate how careful and conservative you are with these numbers when you come in. And as always, you know, we're here for whatever you and your team need. So thank you, Chief. Really appreciate it.
As far as this year's budget, I think we're going to probably come in under budget. The mayor's asked that if we can make any, uh, any cuts, legitimate cuts that we need or that we don't need in funding, we can return some money to the city during these difficult times. And I've made some adjustments to try and do that without any interruption of service. I'm thinking that I make them in under budget in the, you know, within the next few weeks or the next month or so if we have some kind of a problem. But I think we're looking pretty good in this year's budget as well.
I appreciate that. I think throughout anything that may come and, and that we have to address or face as a city, you know, again, no one in your department stops, you know? So again, I really do appreciate it and I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counsel Palmucci and then Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Good evening, Chief, uh, good, good morning, Chief. Nice to see you. Just wanted to check in. How is, um, how has your department been fearing in terms of contraction of COVID-19 among officers?
We presently have zero cases. We've had three cases over the course of the last several months. I'm pleased to say that all three offices are fully recovered and they're back to work. I think some of the steps that we took very early on, uh, we made a number of steps, took a number of steps very early when this was just starting to hit the forefront. We eliminated road calls and gatherings of officers. We basically, the officers now report right to the back deck of the station, check in with the sergeant, get in their cruises and off they go. Also, I'd like to give kudos to the custodial staff. They've been tremendous with decontaminating the building, disinfecting continuously throughout the day. I think some of those moves were helpful. We shut down our lobby basically to the public and we did a lot of things either by phone, offline, or meet people, you know, wherever in a safer place. I think that was, that was helpful. So some of the steps that we did take and we're continuously monitoring it, we're one of the lower in the state as far as offices that were infected. Every day there's an update, a sheet from the Mass Major City Chiefs, and it gives active cases, isolation, that type of thing. And we've been consistently one of the bottom as far as having our offices contracted the great, the disease. We've issued masks to all of our offices. We've gone out and purchased cloth masks so they can continue with, on details or if they're, you know, in the cruiser and they have to engage somebody. We also have PPE. We've been searching high and low for protective equipment. Some of our community partners have been tremendous about getting us whatever equipment that they have that they can spare, Home Depot and a few of the stores. A few of the private citizens have been great about getting us PPE. Ally Sleeman down at the emergency management is in contact with the state as far as MEMA and FEMA trying to get the equipment. We're in pretty good shape, we think, at this point, but we want to make sure we continue to be in good shape and go forward. So we're, we're fearing pretty well all in all, the long answer.
That's good news. Yeah, that's good news. Only three cases. How many, um, how many officers have been put into quarantine?
I think six in, uh, six in total. When, what, what's happened is when we have an exposure, we've been sending them for testing down at the Manette, uh, Manette Clinic down on West Wannup Street, which is, they've been tremendous community partners as well. Everyone that we've asked to be tested has gone right down within a day and gotten tested. Normally if they're exposed or if they have symptoms, we put them out on isolation for a brief period of time. Once they're tested, I confer with Ruthie Jones, who's also been fantastic through this whole thing. She's a real champion. And Ruthie, I usually use Ruthie's guidance as far as if they need to stay out longer or shorter. Most of the times what's happening is after, after the test comes back, which is usually, you know, within a couple of days now, if it comes back negative and the officers come back to work, that's, you know, by, by virtue of the CDC guidelines for essential people. And so it seems like it's been working quite efficiently.
So it, it really sounds like your operational capacity has not missed a beat at all with only six officers being quarantined and three being out. I mean, that's, it seems relatively easy to handle that manpower loss, right?
It is. We actually have a contingency plan for 12-hour shifts with days off, you know, with a certain amount of days off, certain amount of days on, essentially splitting the department in half to make sure that we have at least a half safe workplace or a half safe work crew. And then we'll flip flop, but we haven't had to do that. So it's, it's kind of worked well throughout. And we're just hopeful that it continues. We just can't let our guard down because I'm quick end of.
That's good. And what about custodies and arrests?
Custodies are rested down. The offices do still make arrests for any kind of a serious crime. What they do is they'll take them into the station, we book them here. And then the Norfolk County House of Direction has agreed to take the prisoners if like for long-term, if it was going to be a weekend, long weekend or a weekend. They have been very, very good about taking in our prisoners. So we don't keep them in the station very long. And then they, I believe they vet them out when they get out to the jail. It's actually also worked because of the arraignments, like on a Monday morning, they have a better system. We can do a phone-in type of arraignment system, but they have a better system. They actually have a video conferencing system. So it's much more efficient. It's better for all, all concern, the attorneys, the judge and the suspect. So that's kind of worked very well. We're trying not to, for minor crimes, we're taking out subpoenas and subpoenas. People aren't getting away with bad behavior, but what, they'd still be held accountable, but it just may be at a later date.
Right. So just for an example, that'd be something like somebody stealing something from Walmart and police would normally show up and they could arrest them, take them back to the station, book them, have them held until an arraignment in court. Whereas now you can summons them. So you give them, uh, you take their information at the scene, you let them know they're going to be summoned and then they get, uh, they're not taken into custody and then they get a notice from the court when to appear for their arraignment, right?
That's correct. Yeah, they usually get it, how it generally works, they'll get a trespass notice from whatever store, use Walmart as an example. Then maybe we would subpoena them in, so they would be held accountable at a later date.
All right. And then obviously the thinking, which makes sense, the thinking on that is the less people you have in the police cars, in the police station, the better for the officers and the better, better for the people who are being arrested, that they're not exposed to any potential defendants, right?
That's correct. We've also implemented a policy that when there is an arrest, a physical custody has to take place. We transport those people home in the police wagon. We have a new police wagon. We, we were awarded that, I think it was a year or so ago. It's 20-year-old. So normally that would be used for back and forth from the courthouse and if there was an unruly prisoner or whatever. If most of the times the officers will transport in the, their own vehicles, we put an end to that. So now the only, the only transport vehicle we use is the wagon, the police wagon. And the thought behind that was we can decontaminate that, decontaminate that pretty quickly after each prisoner comes into the station. And then we can decontaminate the cell block area when we release the prisoner. So it kind of keeps the offices out of that mix.
That's great. That's, that's great. That's all good news. I'm glad to hear that we haven't had too many cases of COVID affect our police officers. So it's a good sign. Fingers crossed. Keep up the good work, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counsel Mahoney.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Morning, Chief. I just had a couple of questions. Nina asked the uniform allowance question. I also had the educational differential. It looks like it also went down fairly substantially. Curious to know why.
The educational, it's, it's no longer the Quinn bill. The Quinn bill had a set, fixed amount. The offices rewarded, it was 10% for a associate's degree, 25, 20% for a bachelor's degree and 25% for master's degree. On the last, several, several contracts ago, I believe two contracts ago, maybe eight years ago, that was renegotiated and now it became the Quincy Educational Incentive, which all new offices, instead of getting the full amount from the Quinn, they get 10% for a, uh, associates, 12% for a master's and 5%, I'm sorry, 5% for a, uh, an associate's, 10% for a bachelor's and then 15% for a master's degree. So the percentages have gone down and also new offices that are hired and are not eligible for that benefit for the first year. So that's why that went down because we have offices that are retiring who are getting the full Quinn amounts of, for example, 25% for a master's degree. They're being, new offices are being hired into those positions at, at half that rate. So that's, that's why that went down.
Yes. Thank you for explaining that. Then I just had a couple of questions. I, I appreciate you saying that you're going to be coming in, that you might be coming in. You didn't actually guarantee you're coming in lower this year. What areas do you think that you're going to be coming in lower and then why?
Well, I think some of the overtime, we moved money around at the end of the year and, and I, we will, I don't know that we'll do that. This year we may just turn the budget back in, so there may be some overages in certain areas that we did not spend, including some of the overtime. Because thankfully with the last several months with, um, with the COVID situation, offices aren't taking as much time off. We haven't utilized an awful lot of overtime as far as having backfill shifts and that type of thing. So I may be able to return whatever that money is and any money that's not spent in any of the contractual lines, that money will be returned as well, as best I can do.
Yeah, and that's, and, and that actually answers my question because I noticed that in your, um, in your overtime lines that you're kind of, you're much lower than, um, than you normally are. So I just was curious about that. That's pretty much, I, I noticed that there was, there's, there's numbers that went up. I'm assuming that some of the things that went up were due to new hires, like the holiday, holiday police fire, that type of things. If I'm wrong, you can correct me, but for most of the lines that did go up, I'm, those are mostly the new hires, correct? Reading time, new officers for reading time as well, contractuals?
Correct. Any of those contractual line items that did go up were the result, there was no increase, were just the result of the new, um, the new hires.
And I also noticed in patrolman, um, um, three, it looks like it went down, but it looks like it was offsetted with the patrolman two and one. Is that correct?
That's correct because, uh, as I said, we're losing offices towards retirement or a number of, you know, a number of retirees. So as a result, uh, with those folks are funded at less of a rate. So the, the numbers changes, the categories.
One of the things that's difficult, and this is not just to you, Chief, this is throughout the whole budget because the, there's, I see the shifts that are happening, but we don't, what I can't tell is how many, um, what your, what your full force looks like and, and how many people pick up with different divisions of each one. So maybe that's something you could share with us at a later date just because it's, it's hard to be able to tell. But I think it's important for us to know that as well. How many people just in total without, um, never mind the rank, how many people make a police force total?
There is a chief, there's five captains, there's 14 lieutenants, there's 30 sergeants. And at present, uh, we will be up to 172, 178 patrolmen. Although before those folks even get going in the academy, there's a number of retirements. So I'm anticipating with the retirements, we will be down to about 170 patrolmen, which is up about six positions from last year when everything shifts out. I don't know the exact dates. We have a couple of people that are in the disability pipeline that as soon as they start PERC and Quincy Retirement Board starts meeting, we anticipate that those folks will be put into a disability retirement. We've been a number of retirements, like for example, Lieutenant Mitten will be retiring at the end of the month, in June, the end, the end of June, after about 37 years of service with the city, tremendous service. He's been an excellent officer, Roger White. So the, will be retiring, I believe, at some time in June. Probably all know Roger, he was our community police officer for a number of years. So we anticipate there's several retirements in the pipeline, but when everything shifts down and all those retirements happen, I think we're going to be right around 170, maybe, maybe a little bit under. The goal originally was get to 170. I hope that we can maintain that. You know, there's always unanticipated offices that, that die.
I thank you. I mean, I, I figured you would know it off the top of your head. I do appreciate that. And I, I, I just was curious and I, I appreciate the updates for the retirements too. And, and that's to Lieutenant Mitten and to Lieutenant Rick White. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counsel Falen and Counsel DeBarna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Throw you to the chief. Question I have for you. So you're up around 170 now on patrolmen, on patrolmen at this point?
Yeah, that, well, that's what we anticipate once it's, once it vets out.
So, um, which is, is in my opinion, is a great number because I can remember when you were a lot lower than that at times. And so with, with all these men, you, you feel you can cover all the, all the, all the cars and everything that need to go out every day and all that?
I can. I feel fairly comfortable with that. I mean, we've increased the size of the department. When I took over 12 years ago, uh, there hadn't been an awful lot of hiring. We were down to 146. So down from a previous high, when I took over, when I actually started, I think we're about, I was badge number 169, 164, and I think we had 169 offices and that was 37 years ago. The city has grown by leaps and bounds, but I think we are able to provide tremendous service in, to the city, to the residents. It's a great, safe city and I, I feel comfortable with that number at this point.
Okay. All right, Chief. I was going to ask you about the breakdown, but you already gave that. So I'll just move on and say you're doing a great job and particularly fact that these people go out every day into the job and they're, they're facing more than just criminals and public service now, basically, which they have to deal with every day. And, uh, and I know as a city resident, I feel very safe knowing that I can pick up the phone call with the police department. So thank you very much, Chief. Any support will always be there for you.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counsel DeBarna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Keenan, thanks. Thanks for coming on this morning and presenting your budget. I just want to tell you that you guys, you men and women are doing a fantastic job. Upmost respect and professionalism with our citizens of Quincy and anywhere, any person. It's just, um, you run a great, um, great system over there and I want to thank you guys and women for all that work. Just two things. How are we doing on the drug overdoses and how, how is that looking on the horizon with the COVID-19 pandemic?
Two categories, crime in general and the call volume has been significantly reduced over the last, say, two months or whatever, March and April. It's not, we're starting to see a spike now, but one thing that has been fairly consistent is the drug overdoses. They've been up a little bit. We have seen a good-sized spike in domestic reported issues and incidents. So those are the two categories that have actually kind of gone up a little bit, not something that we really, it's, it's outrageously increased, but it has increased a little bit since the beginning of the lockdown and the COVID situation.
With the COVID-19 pandemic, does it, in the PPE and all the different measures of protecting yourselves, your police officers, has any changes been made based on the nyloxin, knock-hanning situation and how you're going to be able to do that for the future? Is there any changes to that based on this disease that's out there?
The only change is, is now when the officers engage any, anyone that needs knock-han, they're, they're, they're to use PPE. So they glove up, gown up and mask up while they're doing the administration of the, of the nasal knock-han.
Okay.
So that's really a change.
Yeah. It's dangerous. Before the pandemic, I think it's a dangerous situation for our police, fire, EMTs, anyone that has to administer that because the car fentanyl, the fentanyl, it's, it's just dangerous stuff out there every day. The last question I have is the Shannon Grant. I originally was on the Park and Recreation Board many years ago. Are you still receiving that Shannon Grant? And if so, are you still patrolling over in the West Quincy, South Quincy Sterling Middle School area?
Yes, we still do get the Shannon Grant and, uh, and we have been patrolling all of the areas. And actually we're looking maybe to use the Shannon Grant to help us. We've been doing some park patrols as well with the recreation department. We've been doing the park patrols just about every weekend as best we can. We've had some areas of concern that down the neck. I know the crusher has been an area of concern. Um, we've had some areas of concern that down the neck, I know the crusher has been an area of concern. Uh, complaints about the kids drinking or not down there. So we do still have the Shannon Grant, we will use that uh, throughout the city, including the West Quincy part.
I uh, unfortunately, I'd rather see the beer cans than the drugs, drug overdoses, unfortunately. But um, I know Counselor McCarthy has been on, and uh, been on the forefront with the crusher situation. But um, I just want to thank you for all your hard work, Chief, and um, I'm looking forward to the future, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor.
With that, if I can make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. uh, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, motion on the floor by Counselor Dubana, any conversation on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I appreciate uh, all your support, especially during the last couple of months, which has been very challenging for everybody in the city. But I know a number of you have personally reached out to see if you needed anything, and I, I know it goes a long way. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, before you leave us, we have one more, we got the animal control that you can touch on, Chief.
Sure, I, that's basically providing the same level of service that we provided last year with level funding.
Motion approved.
That was my Counselor Kane, any conversation on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Next up is uh, Chief Jackson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Counselors, thank you for having me today, I appreciate your time very much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes. But I, as you can see, uh, I want to thank you again for your time for presenting the twenty-twenty-one budget. And as you can see, uh, it's a pretty lean budget, we're looking for a total increase over the course of the fiscal year of forty-two thousand dollars. So exceptionally lean, especially given the fact that we've just put on thirty-four new recruits. Uh, and to that point, I want to thank you all, I want to thank Mayor Koch and his office and you, the Counselors, uh, for all of your support. With the drill school that just concluded a couple of uh, weeks ago, uh, as I said, we just put thirty-four new recruits onto the department. And uh, last Friday, we had a couple of fires in the city overnight, one down House Neck, one in North Quincy. And the officers that I spoke to uh, were all, uh, they spoke very highly about the recruits, and they were all very grateful for the increased manpower. There's a big difference uh, showing up with an officer and two firefighters and an officer and three firefighters. That extra guy makes all the difference in the world, especially when seconds count, and they did last Friday, these guys did a tremendous job. So uh, thank you very much for all of your support. Uh, I'm happy to answer any questions to the best of my ability on the uh, this year's budget.
But uh, Chair recognizes uh, Counselor Phelan and Counselor Dubana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the, to Chief Jackson. Um, how many, how many actual firefighters do we have on right now?
Uh, with the new recruits being put on, we're at a hundred and seventy-seven.
So that means you can maintain all the pieces of equipment?
Correct, correct.
So we've, we, we have fully manned. Now, on the pieces of equipment, is it still one and two, or we, we up to one and three now?
Yeah, most, a lot of the pieces now are riding one and three. Uh, we expect, we have eight mandatory retirements over the next year, so that number will go down to about a hundred and sixty-nine or so. But right now, yeah, the majority of the pieces are riding one and three, which is huge, huge benefits for us.
Because I, I think uh, over the years, talking with different fire chiefs and stuff like that, my first time on the council, Chief Barry was the chief at the time. And one of the things he always said was, you need to have the manpower once you get to the fire to really make a difference.
Yeah, there's just so much to do, there's, it's just having the manpower, one extra guy makes a huge difference on each piece. It wouldn't seem that it would, but it does.
One other, one other question I had is under contractual, the EMT corps and, and fire, uh, isn't, is that still part of the contract where they, if they were an EMT, they got a certain amount of pay? I'm just wondering why that was zero.
Well, you know what, that was, that was eliminated as of last year, I'm not sure why it's on this. I actually spoke to our business manager just this morning, and I had that same question myself, and he was saying that that was actually eliminated uh, as of last year.
Okay, so that was, are they, is there still a differential in their pay for being an EMT?
Yeah.
So that's in another line, oh, I, I see it up here. Okay, which I think is very important. I remember when that came into the contract, and I think it's very important to maintain and keep all the firefighters at an EMT level. Where medical is a big part of it.
Agreed, agreed.
All right, Chief, uh, again, I just say a great job. Um, all the people who've been working, I, I think now we, we don't look at the ball player, we don't look at other people as the heroes, just the first responders and the medical people, and thank you for your service, and thank all your firemen for doing this in a very difficult time.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Chair recognizes Counselor Dubana.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, Acting Chief Jackson, we're back at it again, right?
Good morning, good morning.
Chief, Chief Cattigan was in there for a little while, you're back in there. I, like I told you before, I think you do a fantastic job. Um, I thank you for all that. Um, just a little bit about North Quincy and House Neck, the both the fires, they were almost simultaneously at the same time. And to have the, the proper manpower to be able to mitigate them at the same exact time is very important, which obviously you know you're in the field, you're a specialist, that the response time, having that extra person on call. So um, I'm always happy to support your, your budget, always happy to support capital improvement plans, especially with the new gear, the second gear that you have, washing machines, showers, um, renovations that were done outside and inside um, some of the stations. Um, it's, it's really important, um, the thirty-four new recruits, uh, drill school, I s- I see a lot of the uh, photos and, and, and videos that you do um, at the drill, I think over at Saint Mary's that you were doing them.
Yes.
You also were doing something on top of one of the buildings, um, I want to say the O'Connell Building, you were doing some, some midi, uh, some type of training up there, but um, I tell you, that's pretty fearless up there. But um, it sure is, I saw some videos, I said, wow, that's, that's high, it's, it's uh, but uh, just in general, just kudos to the whole crew out there, and I thank you for all your time and energy and um, to, to mitigate these fires. And um, I think now you talked about you're at one seventy-seven, just had Chief Keenan on here, we're talking at one seventy, he thinks it's gonna be with the retirees. So uh, with the thirty-four new recruits, it is gonna be very, very helpful, looking forward to um, at a hundred thousand population here in Quincy. So um, no questions at all, just, just kudos to you guys and um, you know, hopefully stay safe with the COVID-nineteenth pandemic. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor, thank you for the kind words, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, any other questions for the Chief, Counselor Palmucci?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Counselor.
Uh, I, I don't know if you were on um, when we went to the police budget, but I just have the same series of questions for you about um, uh, how the, how the troops have been doing during the outbreak, have you had any infections?
Uh, we've all been doing pretty well, thank you, I was on, I was, I was watching uh, Chief Keenan, yeah, kind of a similar situation. We, we've had just uh, one member come down positive, uh, he recovered fine, fortunately. We've had other members that we've uh, self-isolated because there were potential exposures. And again, uh, to piggyback on what Chief Keenan said earlier, uh, huge um, props to Man at Health, because anytime there is a potential exposure, I get in touch with Man at Health, they get us in right away, and we get test results back within a couple of days, which is great to get the guys back into the rotation as quickly as possible. Uh, and fortunately, everybody has come back negative, so.
That's terrific, and.
We've been very diligent, the luck's been on our side, so.
Do you have a um, a staffing plan similar to what the Chief was talking about of going to twelve-hour days? Do you have any such um, ability to do that? I know the fire service is far different now, you schedule shifts.
Yeah, actually, um, for the last couple of months, maybe the last seven weeks, we have everything set up in such a way that all of the firehouses are completely isolated, they're basically like their own little microcosm. Any overtime that needs to be hired is only hired with personnel from that particular station to avoid mixing. And we've been doing forty-eight consecutive hours and then six days off, which has worked out really, really well. That uh, cuts in half the amount of personnel changeovers throughout the week, and it minimizes exposures in that regard. We also have our lieutenants, uh, Darcy, our hazmat lieutenant, he's been coming around twice a week, and he's been decontaminating uh, all of the stations, all of the apparatus, all of the equipment. And I know that that has gone a long way in keeping us safe as well. So like I say, we've been, we've been very diligent, the guys have been very patient, and uh, we've been, we've been fortunate, so. Everything's been pretty good, all things considered.
As if you guys didn't have enough health risks already in doing your job, you know?
Yeah. Well, these guys have done a great job, you know? I get it done, but I get a lot of support from the guys, they show up, they do their job, and it's, that's, that makes all the difference, it makes my job a lot easier, so.
And in terms of um, uh, PPE, how are you situated with masks, I mean, what?
PPE, as of the last week, couple of weeks, we're in a much better position. Um, again, huge thanks to uh, to Ruth Jones, to Ally Sleeman, Ally Sleeman has probably got us over fifteen hundred KN-95 masks right now. Each member of the department has at least five KN-95 masks, and these aren't one-type-use masks, they can use it until it starts to physically break down. And uh, in addition to each member having five, we have twelve hundred KN-95s in reserve and a thousand surgical masks. So we're, we're pretty good, all things considered, again, uh, right now. Uh, hopefully this is something that's in the rearview mirror within the next few months, and uh, we can move on from it. But uh, right now, all things considered, it's pretty good.
And in, and in terms of Operation, uh, Chief Keenan discussed how um, they're purposely not arresting minor crimes, but giving them summons. Uh, I believe I was told by someone um, that we were changing the way in which we handled medical calls, is that correct?
Um, Brewster is kind of being the tip of the spear on the medical calls, we'll still go and support them, which was usually the case. But uh, Brewster's kind of, they're, they're the ones that kind of go in and take the history if we have to. There's been plenty of situations where we've been exposed, we arrived prior to Brewster, and we've had people do CPR on people that are, uh, were running a fever, we didn't know if they were COVID-related, we had to wait to get word back. So there's been plenty of sticky situations on our end, but we're kind of, with their uh, the issue in getting PPE, we're kind of standing back, where Brewster's much better fortified with the PPE than we are, they're kind of going and doing the case history, and then we'll assist if necessary. Uh, so we're kind of playing it like that, and Brewster's been, Chris Duban has just been exceptional to deal with, they've been really, really great with this whole thing, so.
Right, okay, well, good, sounds like you, you have a um, you know, some, some appropriate plans in place, and you're, you're well-equipped. Want to make sure we keep uh, we keep everybody safe out there, so if you need anything, you know, give us a holler, let us know. But thank you, keep up the good work.
Thank you for your support, thank you, Counselor.
Anyone else with questions for Chief Jackson? Can I entertain a motion from someone? Motion to approve, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, thank you, Chief Jackson.
Thank you very much, Chief Chairman, thank you, Counselors.
All right. We're almost there. Um, the best for last. All right, Al Graziosi is up, and uh, he'll start off with uh, engineering.
Good morning. I don't know why my camera's not coming up, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hold on one second.
No, we're good without seeing you, Al, we're all okay.
But try the on button, Commissioner.
Yeah, it's. Showing it's on. Right here? There we go. Still, it's coming up, no camera. Honey. I don't know, it's showing me as a co-host, I don't know why.
Al Graz.
Dave, you might have to turn me on.
Well, Al, your video is on, but for some reason, something's happening on your end, so if you go, see the bottom, do you see the bottom right-hand corner, or the bottom left-hand corner of your screen, where you see the little video camera?
Yeah, I just clicked it on, but it's not coming on the.
Yeah, so do you see the arrow right next to it, though, the arrow pointing upwards?
Yep.
So click on that and go to your video settings. You see that?
Yep.
So in the video settings, you should be able to pick the camera that you want to use, you just want to make sure that your camera settings are turned on to allow you to use it in zoom.
Yeah, it's um, Oh, it's on, right?
Do you plan to do a dance? Yeah, do you plan to do a dance while presenting? I think we can still hear.
Okay, why don't I, yeah, why don't I just um,
Go ahead.
I can just start, and we'll, we'll talk. Um, so good morning, um, before you today, at DPW budgets and include engineering, Public Works, Snow and Ice, Trash Drain, and Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. Our total operating budgets combined for this, uh, these departments is sixty-two million, nine hundred fourteen thousand dollars. It's a decrease from last year. As you'll see, we have made cuts to each one of these budgets, with the exception of trash, which increased due to contractual increases and uh, basically the collapse of the recycling market. With me today, I've got Superintendent Larry Prendeville, City Engineer Paul Costello, uh, Business Manager Paul Delababa, and our Operations Manager Mike Norton. Uh, they're here to help with any questions I may not be able to answer. So I just want to take the opportunity now to recognize and thank the hard-working men and women of DPW for the work they do on a daily basis, uh, serving our residents in professional, in efficient manner, uh, especially during this COVID crisis. So the first budget tonight is our engineering budget. Currently, the engineering department is managing forty-eight million in capital projects. Uh, this includes the Adam Shaw Seawall Project, water main replacement, sewer main replacement lining, road and sidewalk reconstruction, pump station replacements, drainage design. We'll be working on a total of a hundred fourteen roadways this season, not including national grid, uh, work which we also monitor. So I just wanted to acknowledge City Engineer Paul, uh, Costello and his department for the incredible work they're doing. This year alone, our engineers saved nearly four hundred thousand in design cost by designing all, all of our water mains and, and road reconstruction in-house. We had previously designed, designed all of our water mains using private outside contractors. Uh, we're also managing.
Our office. Hi, Gray, how are you?
I'm well, George, and yourself?
He's muted. Sorry, Al, go ahead.
We're, we're also managing these projects completely in-house, and which is saving a considerable amount of money. So the engineering budget decreased by ten thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars uh, this year, coming up. Uh, that decrease was due to, we cut a position, a junior civil engineer, we added a half a position, uh, which we allocated fifty-fifty with the Water Enterprise Fund. Uh, also in this budget, you're gonna see that um, we, we have the project manager resident liaison position. Um, that was funded in fiscal twenty through uh, Water and Sewer Contractual Services and Roads CIP. Uh, this position is uh, Mr. Kintakos, and it's really become an essential position for this department. Um, what he does uh, in residential services, what he does for the engineering department, uh, you know, tracking his spreadsheets, um, going out and answering constituent calls on these projects, uh, meeting with constituents. He, he handled nearly a thousand calls last year. Uh, what he's done, working with the department on, on uh, tree issue on these roads, um, tracking everything on spreadsheets. Uh, he's saved us a considerable amount of money in our MS four budget, because he went out and tracked all of uh, the outfalls that we're paying an outside engineer for. Uh, and he's basically given the engineering department, um, the engineers relief from a lot of those duties. Now they can concentrate on what they do best, managing these uh, road projects and, and these contractors. So that's a position that um, again, is just uh, it's becoming valuable to us. Um, you'll also see that there's a, an increase in the GIS position, um, a slight increase. Um, some of you may not know, but Fred Kapinos, um, a GIS administrator, left in February. Um, we have been looking for a GIS administrator, we actually have gotten uh, people from all across the country apply for the job, uh, through the market, um, you know, what we see in the market, we felt that to attract someone of Fred's quality, we had to increase that salary line item, that sal- uh, that salary, uh, by eighteen sixty-nine, and that's across, I believe, five budgets. Um, so in that budget, you'll see other cuts, um, and some small increases. There was a slight increase in the Administrative Secretary doing an upgrade. Uh, but overall, that budget was cut by ten thousand, eight hundred twelve dollars. And Al, any questions you may have?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Kane. Uh, on the motion, Counselor Yang.
Thank you, Al, for the um, for the GIS administrator, when you said it's spread across five different um, departments, can you just give me the total for what it was, what the salary was when Fred left and what it went up to?
I think it went from seventy-two to eighty-two.
To eighty-two, though, okay, and then which departments does it spread over again?
It's spread over, um, it's Engineering, Water, Sewer, Drain, um, and Public Highway, Public Works.
Okay. All right, thanks, Al, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Um, anyone else with questions on the motion? See no further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, and the ayes have it. Thanks, Al, we'll go on to Public Works.
Okay, the Public Works budget decreased by a hundred fifty. Okay, the Public Works budget decreased by $151,544. We cut one labor MEO Mason and added one Mason heavy MEO, which had a net increase to the budget of $1,690. Uh, we also reallocated one ME repair two position, uh, to Water and Sewer. We cut way to highway maintenance work. Additionally, transportation supplies, that is, um, that's gasoline. We decreased that by $50,000 due to, uh, favorable, favorable pricing, uh, that allowed the city to lock in prices through August 2022. So I'd be happy to go through each line with you, uh, decreases, and how we got to that number. If you have any questions.
Chair recognizes Counselor Yang.
Thank you. Item, it's the pothole repair items. So to date, you've not spent anything, but looking at the historic numbers, um, from previous fiscal years, you always spend the full $30,000. So I'm just trying to figure out, um, if it hasn't been spent yet or if it's something that just gets built from purchasing or if you can explain that to me.
Uh, there still could be some, um, we, some invoices, but this year, as we know, it's a very light year of potholes. Look at a budget like this, um, you know, this year, because of the winter, we had a very mild, uh, pothole repair season. Now, because of that, we started sweeping earlier, doing street sweeping, which, you know, the cost of that budget will probably go up. So you'll see sometimes we do transfers in these budgets because it, it just no year is the same. Um, and we, we, we did luck out because of the pothole, but again, our street sweeping, uh, probably went up because we, we got to it early and we increased it.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you, that was all. Thank you, Al. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other comments, questions? Chair recognizes Counselor Mahoney.
Hey, Al, I just, um, I, I wanted to thank you. I did notice that there was some transfers that were going on, but I, I worked with, um, the auditor today just to kind of go over some of these things. And what I do appreciate about your budget, and I appreciate also Counselor Yang's question in regards to the, um, GIS person, is that you've come in very, very conservatively and you've tightened everything up as best as you can. So, um, I, and the amount of work that you guys get done is, um, is rather, it's just, it's in the, in the amount of, um, projects that you're managing. It's, it's just kind of amazing how much that gets done for all the departments that you manage. So I just wanted to thank you for, um, the effort you've put into your budget and recognizing, um, the situation we're, we're headed into with, um, with the economy the way it is, but being able to maintain our city as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor. Entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Uh, on the motion, no other conversation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, and the ayes have it. Thanks, Al. We'll go to Snow and Ice.
Snow and Ice, uh, no changes to Snow and Ice. It's the same funding as last year and hopefully, uh, we'll have the same type of year next year. As you know, we had, I believe, a million dollars, uh, we ended up giving back, um, so. And I pre, I believe the year before, we also, uh, gave back, so.
Thank you.
Keep this going.
Motion approved by President Liang. On the motion? All those in, oop, on the motion, Counselor Phelan.
Yeah, just quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just quickly to, uh, the DPW Commission. The amount we're up to is, is this the amount that an average snow year might have now? Or, uh, I, I know every year we would incrementally increase it, but, uh, is this number a more realistic number than what we used to put in? The 300?
Yeah, I, I think we used to put in, uh, 300, uh, Counselor, and, um, I know every year the mayor has increased this and I think the last two years we've leveled it. So, you know, again, we just don't know if we have a 2015 situation again, then all bets are off.
Yeah, but I, I think I'm more comfortable seeing it at the higher level. I remember the years when they used to only throw 300,000 in and we had some huge snow years and it would look, it just, we were always scrambling to make up for that. So I, I think that's a great thing to have it in and have it at that level. Thank you, Commissioner.
You, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselors. We had a motion, uh, by President Liang. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. The ayes have it. Thanks, Al. We'll go to, uh, collection and disposal.
Okay, fun one. Okay, collection disposal. Um, we had a contractual increases to the budget line, uh, solid waste disposal and collection of solid waste. That, those were contractual increases, uh, with capital. So there's nothing we can do about that. The, um, let's grab my budget here. The other increase you will see is recyclable material. And I'm going to let Paul Delababa talk to you about that and he can kind of go through the blended value and what's actually happening in the recycle market.
Morning, Counselors, how are you?
Morning, Paul.
Okay, so the, um, the recycling, i- it's kind of hard to estimate now and predict where we're going to be at because of, um, the commodity market for other recyclables. So I just, to step back, I, I'd like to point out that in May of 2018, the blended value was at $19.20. And what that tells, tells us is, you know, our contractual rate for processing fee at that time was $88. We were getting $19 back, uh, for our recyclables, which brought up, reduced our rate down to $68.80. It was, it was a good deal. Now, it's gone completely the opposite way. Right now, the blended value is, uh, minus $7.95 and our processing fee is, you know, gone up contractually to 100. So we're now paying $109 per ton to, um, process our recycled materials. So I reached out to Waste Management to ask them where they saw this going prior to COVID-19 and they told me to basically plan on a surcharge up to anywhere as, um, to around $25 per ton. So that, that could bring our processing fee up to $126 per ton. There's, there's really not a strong market for recycled material, materials, uh, at this point.
Any questions from Mr. Delababa? President Liang?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a question on that. So, um, do they give you any sense as to what the surcharge is coming from? Is it from, uh, is it like during just this pandemic where, you know, particularly over the last two months, where obviously everywhere, you know, like specifically businesses, um, are potentially paying or anything like that?
Uh, Counselor, basically nobody, there's no demand for this recycled material at this time and it's been declining since, uh, 2018. Back in 2018, there's still a, a demand overseas. China in particular was, was a big purchaser of, um, the cardboard and the glass and all this plastic material that we were recycling. But since then, they've entered the market themselves. So demand has dried up. So what happens is we're basically paying people now to store this recyclable material. And until the market turns around and, and right now with the economy at, you know, in a standstill, um, it, it doesn't look like there's going to be much of a demand anytime soon.
Yeah, okay. I just didn't know if it was, um, you know, something with the, the companies are trying to off balance and offset with municipalities rates going up, if, um, private businesses with larger buildings or developments potentially were closed and maybe weren't paying. So, um, I was just curious about that. And, uh, the second and last question I have for you is actually for two items that, uh, both of them had gone down. One is the 30-yard containers and the other is recycling bins. Um, is that for, I, I know that we were working on trying to do municipal, um, what is it, recycling bins and, and containers and whatnot. Is this this line item? And if it's not, then why did these two line items go down?
Well, the recycling bins, um, went down, um, we, we didn't purchase any this year. We're going to have some purchases coming up for the schools and the public buildings this year. I, I actually, when it got late in the year, I told Mr. Sullivan, uh, not to spend any money. Uh, as we tighten the belts, the mayor asked us to tighten the belt. So I, I asked him not to spend money there. Uh, we will need that money this year because we do need, we will need recycled bins coming up for the schools and public buildings.
Okay. All right, and, and, you know, even though, I mean, it's cut, you, you cut these lines significantly and it's going to be enough to cover, um, what you think you'll need for, for the buildings?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so then to that end, uh, because I, it now has me thinking about the citywide barrels that we were doing. Is that something that you can update us on? Or, Mr. Walker, if you could just give us a really, really brief update on that. I don't want to digress too much.
Go through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we are essentially where we were, uh, when this pandemic started. We had been in the planning stages. We had updated the plan. I think the mayor had anticipated being before you, uh, in the spring perhaps. Um, obviously that's not going to happen. So we're looking towards either the fall 2020 or first quarter of 2021, uh, to get the plan before you. Uh, it seems like every time we try to move on this, uh, something gets in the way. Uh, but we are still planning on having a plan before the body.
Great, thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you so much, Al. Um, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Counselor. Chair recognizes Counselor Phelan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I guess it would be to Paul. I got a question on the recycling materials. I remember in the day when, when recycling first started, I happened to be on the council. And one of the things was we took plastic bottles, one, two, three. We didn't take anything else. Recently, when we went to Wall M1, now everything goes, kind of goes in. And having watched a couple of things on, uh, PBS about the plastic problem and all that, it kind of comes into, maybe we weren't wrong in the beginning when we were only taking those. But I guess, is there any, is there any way we could maybe educate people on that? So we're not, so we actually take materials that can be recycled? Because most of the stuff you have can't be recycled. That plastic cookie thing, it has a recycle symbol, doesn't, doesn't work, doesn't recycle. But a, um, a bottle with the one, two, or three might actually recycle. So I guess, um, I, I don't know how you would do it, but I, I guess if you have any thoughts on that? If, um, there was any way to mix that in as part of it, maybe an education process of people?
Yeah, yeah, I'll speak to that, Counselor. Um, yes, we, we do have plans to, uh, to, um, start, uh, in education. Uh, we, we actually got some grants to do, um, to do this type of thing for education to, uh, we, to actually get hired people to go out and, and, uh, and, uh, put stickers on barrels if we, if we're finding people are, are not, they're actually, they actually inspect, um, recycled bins. And if they see people putting improper materials in, they, they put, uh, some kind of a sticker on or some kind of a, a notice, educating the people. Um, so there is a, there is a plan and it's, um, part of it comes out of the state. So we're, we're looking at that now, how to, um, set this in motion. But it, 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 it's definitely on our radar.
Okay, thank you. Because I know, uh, we got very used to throwing just about anything in there and there is some limited things that are actually recyclable that would, would be processed. But because everything now has a recycle button on it, which is a mistake by the industry, I believe. But, um, so thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, I think that will be, I don't want to make it seem like recycling isn't a good idea because it's costing us some money. It is a very good idea, but sometimes it's what you recycle that, uh, that can cause a problem. So thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Counselor. Any more questions on collection and disposal? Counselor Mahoney?
Just wanted to check in quickly and just ask this question. I know that we do have a composting kind of subcommittee that's, that's been looking into things. Um, and they, they do get some progress happening right before we went into this COVID-19. I was just wondering if there's any, um, discussions about that maybe for the future?
I, I can handle that. Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman. We did have a, a, a meeting now to stretch my memory, Counselor, because it was pre-COVID. Um, we believe-
It was like a hundred years ago.
I know. I believe we are anticipating a set of recommendations from, from the group, um, with some potential options. I know there's a, a, an offshoot of that group working with the school department, um, developing perhaps a pilot program in the, within the school system. That may be one of the recommendations that comes out of it. And there's also been some movement relative to a pilot program, uh, within the city itself. Um, and again, this was a meeting, I think we took maybe February, um, relative to investigating it a little further. Um, so essentially I would, I would, I think we're still waiting on the final set of recommendations from the task force. I actually have a meeting next week, uh, with the folks, some of those folks that were on that task force and that'll be a subject that, that we'll dive back into, Counselor.
Yeah, I'm just bringing that up just because recyclables obviously are, um, they're going to only get more expensive. This isn't something, this isn't something new and it's going to be something that we're going to be constantly dealing with. And the same thing with obviously, um, the amount of trash that we're having picked up and recyclers will be able to offset that. And composting is something that's working in other communities. I know we are working on that, so just want to give a shout out to that committee and, um, just hopefully that will be something that we can move forward with and, and find another way to, um, bring this budget back in line. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Counselor Kane. Uh, on the motion? Nothing more? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. Thank you, uh, Paul and, and Al for that explanation on, uh, collection and disposal. Drain Department, uh, Mr. Grazioso.
The drain budget decreased by $31,989. Seven positions were reallocated, uh, 40, 40, 20 between water, sewer, drain, which reduced the personal services line by $35,652. A general foreman position was added, which increased the budget by $26,618. Additional cuts to overtime, travel allowance, and police details resulted in a net decrease of $16,989 to personal services. And I would welcome any que-
Chair recognizes President Liang.
Yeah, I want to make a motion to approve, but I also just want to, um, take a moment to call you out, Alan. Thank you. Because, you know, when we go through this and we see, um, you know, items that aren't being spent and some decreases that could potentially happen based off of historic spending, you cut significantly the video technician line, um, as well as the travel allowance based off of previous spending. And I just wanted to, you know, again, just take a moment and thank you for doing so and, um, being so mindful about that coming into this year. So, uh, thanks, Al, and motion to approve.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Motion on the floor to approve. Uh, on the motion? Seeing no more conversation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, and the ayes have it. Thanks, Al. We'll, we'll move on to the, uh, Sewer Enterprise.
Okay, um, before we get started, I just wanted, there's a little housekeeping. Um, want to let you know that the debt service lines and the water sewer budgets are based on a new refinancing program, uh, we qualify for related to our MWRA capital loans. This program will provide flexibility in our annual debt service payments for, uh, approved capital budgets. We found out yesterday from the MWRA that that does require the council to sign off on the refinancing. So we'll have, we will have those orders for you for the meeting on June 15.
So, Al, that's a, uh, a program that really doesn't change any of the numbers, but puts us on a new, a new schedule that probably might be beneficial to the city?
Yes, definitely beneficial to the city.
Okay. Uh, do you want to, um, go over this or a little bit? And then I'll go back and, and, and see if we had any questions?
Sure. So, so the Sewer Enterprise Fund decreased by $718,187, uh, 2.72, uh, year over year. Uh, the Enterprise Fund was able to take advantage of the debt service deferral opportunity, uh, provided by the MWRA. Uh, the result was a debt service reduction of $443,532. Additionally, the MWRA sewer assessment decreased by $308,934. Personnel services- Um, personnel services increased $52,813 and contractual services decreased by $75,000.
Thank you, Al. Any questions on the Sewer Enterprise for Commissioner Graziosi? Chair recognizes President Liang.
Yeah, um, I apologize, I just stepped away at the beginning of this, so if you already addressed it, just let me know, but there's two items, um, here that had gone up significantly. One is the project manager line that was created for $16,800 and then the general foreman line went from 26 to 53. Can you just let me know what the increases are for?
Yeah, the, uh, the project manager, uh, resident liaison, that was the position I talked about, that was five ways out of, uh, we talked about the engineering, Mr. Kintacross. So that was, um, that, that was, again, that was part of that, um, five-way split.
Okay, and then the general foreman one?
Uh, let me just see. The general foreman was one that we, we created a general foreman position in, in, in the, in the, for water sewer drain. Um, we wanted, uh, it's paid three ways and it's, it's to give us, it gives us a little more, um, uh, how do I say it? It, it, yeah, accountability for the drain, drain and MS4, which is, um, a critical area now. Um, it takes a lot of the pressure off the other general foreman who was trying to manage three departments, water sewer and drain. So we felt it was a, a pretty important, uh, thing to do. Drain is, um, even though it's split three ways, but drain is, uh, right now, we probably have more calls and drainage issues and, uh, more going on in that area than, uh, than, uh, than we'd like, but it's, uh, it's a very critical area right now, so.
No, I, I completely agree and let us take this moment to do a quick PSA to not flush, um, disposable wipes, please, and I appreciate it. Thanks, Al.
Okay.
Thanks, Counselor. Uh, any other questions on this department? Have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. On the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, the ayes have it. And the last one, Al, Water Enterprise.
Water Enterprise. Uh, we decreased that budget by $901,711. Um, again, we took advantage of the debt service deferral opportunity by the MWRA. Um, the result was a debt service reduction of 1.5 million, 1.537273. Uh, and then additional, uh, personal services increased by just $13,017 and contractual services decreased by $63,968. So the total, um, budget decrease was $901,711.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Counselor Kane on the motion, President Liang.
Thank you, Al. Just one question on the line item under contractual services for the animal pest control. Um, historically, this line item hasn't been used, so could you just explain to me what it's for and if it's going to be used for this fiscal year and next fiscal year?
Well, I think if you look last year, um, we spent all of that. Um, this year, one, one of the things we did this year, um, we tried to incorporate, uh, greater pest control within our contracts, um, for instance, uh, roadwork contracts, um, so, you know, water sewer, seawall, but, um, that being said, um, we're concerned about, um, we're seeing a little bit of a jump as we're doing, uh, the seawall project down at that. I'm sure we are a little bit nervous about as we rip these walls out, we're gonna see more rodents and, uh, so we wanna make sure that we have the means to, uh, deal with those issues that may come up.
Okay. That makes sense. I appreciate it. I just wanted some clarification on it. Thanks, Al. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Thank you, President. Uh, Chair recognizes Mrs. Mahoney.
Thank you. Um, Al, I just have a quick question. It's less about your budget and more about when you set the rates for water. I mean, we have a drop in our, um, our estimates here. I'd like to know how that works because obviously people are, um, always very sensitive about their water bills, so it's just curious to know what the, how that process works.
I'm gonna let Paul Delababa speak to that, Counselor.
Sure.
Counselor, how are you?
Very good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Okay, so, you know, right now, you know, looking at the numbers and, um, seeing the, you know, the, the drops in the budget, you know, it is encouraging to take a look at it, but we, I really can't even provide a rate recommendation at this point until we, the, the budgets have been approved and, um, you know, we have our indirect and direct expenses calculated off the citywide budgets and, um, you know, at that point, we'll be able to provide the rate recommendation to the mayor, but right now, i- it's looking good, um, because obviously our revenue requirement is, is not as high as it was last year.
Right. And the reason why I'm asking that, when does that get set? Just so I, so I do get asked, this is one question I get asked all the time because, you know, water is expensive, so, you know, when did, when do you, like, we know when the tax, taxes for, um, we set the tax rate in the fall, is the water rate similar in that timeframe or?
Well, yes. Well, the water rates are set July 1st, um, and we're required by law to advertise those rates, um, two weeks prior to that. Uh, so you'll see in the coming weeks, you know, mid-June, uh, we'll be running a legal ad in the Quincy Sun.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, um, just so that, that it can be, um, you know, you can say it out loud and anybody that's listening can, can hear it. So I appreciate that very much and, um, I hope it, I hope that too stays, um, level if it goes down. Thanks.
That's my call. Thank you.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Counselor. Uh, Chair recognizes, uh, Counselor Harris.
Good morning, Doc. Chairman. Um, I wanna just, uh, reach out and say to, uh, Al, um, and his, and his group, um, I always ask for, uh, uh, things and sometimes it's a little tug of war, but, um, in the long run, um, you've helped me, as many of the other department heads have, and, um, I truly, uh, appreciate, uh, everything that you folks do and, um, and I, of course, uh, support this, uh, this section of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Counselor Harris. Chair recognizes Counselor Palmucci.
Yeah, just wanna say, just, just a quick warning, Al, when the guys are out mowing the lawns today, make sure they don't run over Counselor Harris. We'll approve it.
I'm not, I'm not even gonna comment on that one, Counselor.
Don't worry, don't worry. They don't go down my street anymore.
Wow.
Motion made by Counselor Palmucci. Uh, on the motion? Counselor Dubana? You're muted, Noel.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm unmuted. I'm not, I'm muted. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just real quick on, um, Com, Commissioner Graziosi, so just wanna thank your whole entire, uh, team for every and all the work you've been doing. One thing about Al, that's when he's come on, that I, I've known from other departments he's been in is he's, he's got a great eye and attention to detail. Let me tell you, I'm being a, being a landscaper and you gotta be able to see things that the average eye does not see and you, you're very, very good at it. So, um, I just, I'm, I'm happy that you put a fine comb under your budget and, um, if there's areas that you don't think you need, you, you take them out or you decrease them and, um, I just wanna thank all, thank you for all your hard work out there. Um, drive around the city and just see all your crews out there doing a great job and thank you so much. Um, motion to approve or, um, accepted all of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
We got a motion by Counselor Palmucci. On the motion? I don't see any more conversation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, no, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, thanks, Al. Nice, and Al, nice, nice job, uh, with the cuts and, and as my colleague said, with, with all the work that gets done, um, and the response, uh, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks, Al.
Thank you, Counselors.
Have a good day.
Thanks, Al. So this, uh, kinda brings us to the end, but we'll, I'm gonna have to have one more session. Um, my notes from last night, uh, indicate we still need a good answer on the Furnishbrook question and we need a good answer on the health insurance question that Counselor Palmucci brought up. Uh, I spoke with Mr. Walker this morning. My thought is, after conferring a little bit back and forth with, uh, Counselor, um, President Liang, was to, uh, look to have Mr. Walker and company, uh, do some homework over the next couple of weeks and we'll set up a, uh, Zoom meeting on the 15th, uh, public hearing from 6:00 to 6:05 and then a, uh, finance committee meeting starting at 6:05 and hopefully we can start our regular meeting at 7:00. That's what we tentatively threw together, uh, in the last couple of minutes. That'll give plenty of time for answers on those two, on those two questions that I think were the two, uh, numbers questions that we had. I know that we also asked, uh, for some information to come back from Alex Slem and I'll work with him. Um, other than that, if anybody has any comments, I will close this out right now. We will wait to have those meetings, um, make the approval in subcommittee and bring it to the council that night and approve the budget, hopefully. Uh, so I will, um, I will leave us right now on adjourned at, uh, 11:22 and I wanna thank everybody. It went pretty good. So, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good day, everybody. Good weekend.
Bye-bye.